My surface pro says it's 6:00 PM. So unless anyone objects, seeing that it is the hour 6:00 PM on Monday, February 1st, 2021, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Series. Notice that this meeting will be held in accordance with the executive order and 2920 issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 17th, 2020, the Ralph and Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54950 at SEC and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. This meeting will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public may participate at the comment and comment via the application Zoom. Meeting information is website https://backslash backslash zoom.us backslash join. Remote public comment is also available for the Planning Commission meeting by emailing anne.mcmurray@ci.series.ca.us by 6:00 PM on the date of the meeting or via the phone application Zoom. At this time then, I'd like to rise and say to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Tom, for the flag. Are there, at this point, I'd ask the clerk to please call the rule.
Yes, Commissioner Del Nero.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Katchel.
Here.
And Chairperson Smith.
Here. Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any conflict of interest to declare? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Citizen Communications. To the Commission on Matters Not Included on the Agenda, while the Planning Commission welcomes and encourages participation in the Planning Commission meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the Planning Commission from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Planning Commission. Citizens are entitled to address the Planning Commission on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Public comments will now be accepted through Zoom. For those participating through the web, please raise your hand to request to speak using the hand icon located at the bottom right of your screen. If you are participating by phone, please press star nine on your phone. Names will be called in the order the requests are received and your microphone will be unmuted when it's time for you to speak. Tom or Anne, are there any members of the audience who wish to speak via Zoom?
Yes, I have one. Russell Fowler, District 5 Field Rep, has their hand raised.
Thank you. Mr. Westbrook, would you like to let him into the meeting?
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Do you hear me well?
We can hear you.
All right. Good evening, Russell Fowler. Field Air Force Supervisor Chance Condit. Just wanted to introduce myself and the supervisor will look forward to attending these meetings when he can. Just wanted to say that our office is up and running and we'll happen to be partners where we can.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fowler. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Fowler? Thank you, Mr. Fowler, and please express our appreciation to Supervisor Condit.
Of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public via Zoom?
I see none at this time.
Thank you. Have we received any public comments through email?
Yes, staff received two emails regarding Agenda Item 3, but none for the Citizens Communications portion of the meeting.
Thank you, Anne. And then I'm assuming that we will hear those while we received them through email earlier in the day. We'll get more into the discussion of those when we get to that item, correct, Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah, that's the case that if the Commission wants to hear those, we can read them into the record or give a summary.
During the item or now?
No, during the item.
Okay. All right. If there's no other comments from the public at this point, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Will the clerk please read the consent calendar?
Yes. Item 1, Clerk's Report of Posting. The Agenda for the Regular Meeting of the Planning Commission of February 1st, 2021 was posted on January 26, 2021. And Item 2A, Approval of Minutes from the Meeting of January 19, 2021, and all commissioners were present.
Thank you, Anne. At this time, I will accept a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll move approval.
I have a motion from Commissioner Katchel. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Del Nero. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Yes, Commissioner Katchel.
Aye.
Commissioner Del Nero.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson. And Chairperson Smith.
Aye.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you. So no items were moved from the consent calendar. We'll move now to public hearings. Item 3, Site Plan Approval 20-09, Proposal for a 10-Unit Multifamily Residential Apartment Project at 3420 Ninth Street. Putney Ventures LLC is the applicant. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, ma'am chair. Mr. Westbrook, can you put up the page 29? It's the site plan page, Plan Sheet A1-0. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And so what you have here, folks, is the applicant's been working with staff the past few months on a proposal to construct a 10-unit apartment project located at 3420 Ninth Street. The proposal requires approval of a site plan approval entitlement for the overall review of the project, the aesthetics, land use and site development. The overall site plan, as you see here on the screen, illustrates the layout of the proposed buildings, which includes two 6,093-square-foot two-story buildings. Each building will house five two-bedroom and two-and-a-half-bedroom dwelling units for a total of 10 units and two five-car carport structures. The site will be accessible from Ninth Street that will lead to a parking area of 20 spaces to serve the project and include some new landscaping improvements along the property's frontage of Ninth Street, as well as within the interior of the project parking area. And it also include, of course, the paid onsite parking areas and a gated entrance near the Ninth Street entrance there. The, in terms of the appearance of the buildings, Tom, could you turn to page 42? Or? Oh, okay. That's 34. I'm sorry. It would be the, you know, I have it here as page 42 on the. There you go. Thank you. And so what you have here, it's a two-story apartment building. There's two of them. They'll be designed to about 26 and a half feet tall. They're basically a combination of a gray taupe-type cement plaster finishes integrated with a gray horizontal shippable lapped siding and composition roof material. In general, Steph is in support of the project. It does provoke infill development. It provides a housing option to accommodate the housing needs of future residents of Series. Steph believes that this is an attractive architectural design that provides a high-quality housing option that will enhance the surrounding neighborhood. Having said that, as was indicated earlier by Ms. Anne Montgomery, we did receive two emails in regards to this project and the Commission was forwarded those emails earlier this morning. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. At this point, do you want to summarize what the emails were and from whom you received them?
Chair Smith, I do think in the participants that one of the participants who submitted an email is on this evening. So perhaps they would like to speak in the public comment section. So perhaps we'll open that up. And if we don't hear from both of the persons that submitted the email, then we can summarize those.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Does anyone on the Commission have any questions to staff at this time? No. All right. Seeing none, we'll move on and open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience via Zoom that would like to speak on this matter?
I see no hands raised at this time, Chair.
So perhaps noting that there were no hands raised, James, if you could kind of summarize the emails that we received from the two individuals. Actually, I do see a hand raised now. Chair Smith. It's a telephone number with a pre-six, seven, one, three. Trying to get them to unmute their line.
So, okay, if the caller can, okay, it looks like you're unmuted. Please identify yourself and state your name and address before you begin your comment.
Yes. Good evening all. This is Daya Salahu D. My address is 3427 Ninth Street.
Thank you. Go ahead.
And, yes, and so, yes, I did send an email. I was very disturbed to understand that it would be a 10-unit apartment building proposed here or right across the street from myself. Now, my neighbors were petitioned by the owner to sign a, what is this? A abandonment release form to aid him in building this 10-unit. But the disturbing part for me is that he told the neighbor that he was, he needed the signatures and he needed, well, his intention was to build a home for his mother and rent the other out. It is a property that has two shabby homes. So he said he was going to tear them down and build one for his mother. And everybody loves their mother, you know, and that he was going to rent the other one out. And just over the weekend, I saw my neighbor. He looked a little not as well as he looks in general. Very friendly person, very friendly, very kind and what have you. And we asked him, you know, hey, what's going on? You know, how are you doing? And he pulled out the letter. It's the same letter also we received later that said that it was going to be a 10-unit. So I don't feel good about this person. I mean, we are a neighborhood of neighbors who we speak with each other. You know, it's nice, it's quiet, it's calm. And we're truthful with each other. And we're talking about an investor, someone coming from the outside, coming in for, you know, to invest in property and make some money, which is a good thing. And the city will get money, you know, from the taxes. That is a good thing, too. Don't have a problem with that. But he's very deceitful. That is deceitful to say that. And it was not a lie that he said that. He did say that. And, you know, I'm just a little perplexed here. Like, what is going on here? You know, you're going to come in and tell us one thing, but you have something else in mind. And I fear that if we do have problems here, who do we have that's going to deal with this? A dishonest person? No, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else, Mr. Westbrook, in the Zoom that would like to speak on this matter?
Yes, it looks like there was Abdul Malik.
Mr. Malik, if you.
Can you unmute your phone for us? Or your computer screen?
There you go.
Yes. You just finished speaking with my wife.
Okay.
The thing that bothers me is none of you live here in this area. And if you came down the street on a regular day, you will see there's a lot of cars, a lot of trucks. And to say that this will be gated in with 10 units, normally people who have a house, a condo, whatnot, will have two cars, maybe three cars. And for that to be so, it's going to crowd this street. Because there are times when I come from the Bay Area and my daughter's come to visit from Los Angeles, there's no way to park. And for this, the people are going to be crowded in like sardines. And then we look at the fact that, you know, eventually, you know, the crime rate will possibly go up. And because this area is small, it's quiet. And this is why we moved here, because it was nice, it was quiet. And the fact that it's not congested. And to just crowd a 10-unit apartment, we talk about with more people, it only de-beautifies this street and this area. It's not really helping Series. It's doing Series an injustice. And the thing that I don't like about this guy is, I saw him, I've talked to him before. The guy is very manipulative and he lied to my neighbor when he said that he wanted to build this for his mother. That was only to get the people to accept what he was doing because the underlying motive was him to get his pockets fat off of this area. And I'm totally opposed to it.
Thank you, Mr. Malik. We appreciate your comments.
Yeah.
Mr. Westbrook, do you see anyone else?
Yeah, there's Sandeep.
Yeah, hey, guys. Can you guys hear me okay, Tom?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, hey, guys. This is Sandeep that everyone's talking about, who apparently lied to the neighbors when I went around and stuff, which is first, you know, not true. But let me explain this. So everybody's talking about the TID abandonment issue. So the property that I purchased originally, so it has a single-family house on this property, which there was a person living there who passed away and then we ended up acquiring the property with the intent that I was going to put my retired mom, who retired as a city nurse from Santa Clara Valley Medical Hospital after working there for 15 years. So that was the original intent. But when we looked at the house, it was in such a bad shape. And when I started doing my calculations in terms of what it would take for me to make it livable, it just, you know, added the complexity of adding a lot more money into the house for it to be totally torn down and rebuilt. So what everyone else is talking about is a TID abandonment issue, which is a completely separate issue from the property. So there's a TID irrigation pipe that runs from the middle of the property to adjacent parcels. So what we ended up doing was we ended up going and asking the neighbors, you know, under whom the properties, there's also a pipe that runs. So TID mentioned that, hey, you know, there is an easement that exists on your property. So you can't really build something, you know, over here. So you have to get the abandonment from everybody for us to be able to end the easement. So I went around and I talked to all of the neighbors. And at that time, the plan was for me to be able to fix the house so I can put my mom there. But given the time and the urgency that it needed, I ended up moving my mom to Manteca. And that's where she's at right now. So, and this project left me with a land that all of a sudden now we're like, hey, let's start figuring out what else we can use this for. There's multifamily properties on the north side. There's multifamily apartment units on the east side of this property. And my immediate neighbor to the south side of this property, she was also there. And I spoke to her and clearly outlined the plans that, hey, you know, now we're working with the city and the planning department to be able to put in a 10-unit apartment complex. So never once we lied, we were openly transparent to everybody. Had nobody been on the street at that time, I would have completely explained the situation over to all of the neighbors. So the abandonment issue being aside and separate, that's just for us to be able to end the easement for TID because nobody's really irrigating anymore. And there's no reason for that easement to exist. And I talked to all of the neighbors, completely explained. Even TID called each and every one of them and explained that, you know, what that means when they sign the TID abandonment. So I think there's a little bit of a confusion there with the neighbors that all of a sudden I somehow duped them into giving up their rights, which we didn't. By not having the easement, we helped them increase the property value of all of their properties. And that was clearly explained to them. The 10-unit multifamily plan came up a little bit later when, you know, when I was left with a land that all of a sudden, you know, looking at and talking to the multifamily property owners, they were like, hey, you know, we keep getting requests from people wanting to rent. And there's a lack of, you know, residents that, you know, that there's sort of like a major shortage for housing in the area. So we're like, hey, why don't you put up, you know, or work with the city to bring something, you know, something in. So that was, that was sort of, you know, the whole thing with this planning. And, you know, and we're making sure that, you know, somebody mentioned parking, so that there's ample parking for residents and we're providing ample parking for guests, which is going to be on the property. So we're not, you know, adding anything to the streets. All of the units, if you look at the design, they're all facing each other. We want to make sure that this is, this is a good housing neighborhood that people are encouraged to congregate. We're sort of using all of the environmental-friendly factors to be able to build this development. So we're going to put, you know, path lights, perimeter lights, secure access, solar, tankless water heaters. So we're not just coming in and putting in, you know, little sheds. We're trying to come up with a nice project where people would actually want to live, you know, and contribute to the community. So hopefully that explains a little bit. But if there are more questions from the community members or neighbors, I am more than happy to delve into, you know, the details of this project.
Thank you, Sandeep. Your last name is Minhas.
Correct.
Does anyone on the Commission have any questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Minhas. That was helpful. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Westbrook, is there anyone else in the audience who has not spoken?
Yes, there's somebody with a last four digits, nine, five, eight, nine. I'm going to allow them to speak. They can unmute.
There you go. Please state your name.
Good afternoon, my name is Noe Garcia. And I live across the proposed building site. I live at 3415 Ninth Street. And I am the neighbor that I spoke to, Mr. Minhas, regarding the abandonment, and the one that Mr. Malik was mentioning earlier regarding, I'm showing him the letter that I received, the public, the actually the notice for this meeting. So I've been resident here. I've been the homeowner here for almost 12 years. And I did speak to Mr. Minhas regarding his proposal to build his mother a house. I'm that neighbor that he was mentioning. And so that aside, regarding the applicant mentioning that he's actually increasing the property value, that is incorrect. I actually spoke to TID's representative and he was not going to increase or decrease the value of my property or any property by abandoning the Stokes, the irrigation line known as the Stokes. So he's not doing anybody a favor besides, you know, congesting the area with more traffic and more residents here. My main concern is actually safety. I've been a peace officer more than 12 years now. And my concern if it's, you know, getting 20 more people literally across the street from my house, that I have no notion and I have no idea who they're going to be or if it's going to be people that I've, you know, dealt with in my, you know, my current or previous career as an officer, if that's going to be an issue for me or my family, that's going to jeopardize our safety as well. Just having random people move in the area and in and out as well. I do understand there's a proposed to build a, you know, a gate. That's, I'm not sure how that's going to alleviate anything. But that was my concern. That's my concern now. It's, I mean, not if it's going to be built, but if it's going to be, you know, posed a safety issue for myself and my family. As I previously mentioned, I've been a peace officer for 12 years. I'm currently a side, I'm currently a peace officer still here in San Diego County. So, you know, it's not in my best interest to be in the front yard or be anywhere near where, you know, people can literally pull me out and knowing that I'm that officer. So that's how well to voice my concern as well. But what I didn't like either, him saying that he can increase the property value. He's not doing anybody a favor, except bringing more people. And I know people, people that are not going to take care of the property, they're renters, they can abandon the property anytime. Or, you know, most of my neighbors and including myself, we're gone all day. We're working people. Our house is going to be empty majority of the day and we're going to have people that we don't know. And, you know, are they going to be littering in front of our property or just seeing if they can take something from here? That's our issue now.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Westbrook, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this?
It looks like Jorge Padres.
Yeah, hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So I live on 10th Street, 3425. And, you know, it's an apartment complex building. And, you know, I've kind of gotten news about this. And I'm just going to say, I'm pretty neutral. You know, part of me says I have family members which are crowding more and more apartments where there is a big shortage of housing, affordable housing. And I can't, I can't imagine where else they're going to go. If this building is going to be up to standards and help beautify the neighborhood, I'm actually appalled that a police officer would be saying that he's going to be worried about people moving across the street because where else are they supposed to go? Right? There's already a big shortage of housing and there are apartment units already in the neighborhood. So, you know, if anything, you know, I think it helps the city with what I'm already hearing and seeing in my family and friends on affordable housing. You know, I'm a little bit appalled by some of the comments being made, which seem to be very selfish. But you've got to think of the general population to some degree, too, all the people renting the units around in this area.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Westbrook, is there anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this matter?
It looks like Abdul Malik has his hand raised again. Chair will recognize him.
Well, I think we're limiting comments to one time each person. And I'd rather keep it that way.
Because he has his hand raised in addition to Sandeep, who I think just lowered his hand.
Yeah. So public comment is limited to one time per person. So we won't be recognizing people for additional time. Is there anyone who has not spoken on this matter?
I don't believe that there is at this time.
All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the Commission. I'll close the public hearing. And is there anyone on the Commission that has any questions or comments regarding this item?
One question. I'm sorry to interject. Tom, the written comments and statements that you received, the individuals who drafted those, were they already?
Yeah, James, can you confirm that? I think it was. Yes, both of the emails were from the individuals. They have, they've spoken tonight, Mr. Garcia and Ms. Sala Houdain. They have spoken. And so they basically covered what was in the email.
Okay, thank you. So let me just ask a couple of questions. The way that I understood what the speakers were concerned about really broke down to two things. The issue of the TID irrigation line abandonment may or may not have had to take place with any construction that may have taken on the property. So I'm not sure we should be dealing with that. But the issue before us tonight is a site plan approval. So I don't know if it's James or Tom. If you could just explain, this property is zoned for multifamily use.
Correct.
Are there any circumstances under which this property can be constructed without any sort of Planning Commission approval?
Yes, if it was just one single-family residence and with that may perhaps a secondary dwelling unit, that would not require Planning Commission approval.
So, but we are approving not the use, but the site plan, the way that it's located on the property and the elevation.
Correct. And the parking.
My family.
Correct. And so.
And so Commissioner Smith, if you would like, I prepared an exhibit, some of these areas that some of the callers mentioned is in an area that has some existing and developed multifamily units. And so I'm going to share my screen again. So if you're looking on this screen, the kind of the blue star in somewhat the middle of the property, that's the project site as proposed. All these little red stars are other multifamily complexes within the Ninth Street and Tenth Street area. So there are similar-sized units and developments in kind of this existing area. So I just wanted to give the planning commission some perspective that this necessarily isn't the first, and directly adjacent to the project site, there's some complexes that already exist, so.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So it's the appropriate use, the property is properly zoned for this kind of use. The other concern that was raised was the parking and the additional traffic, and the applicant, I believe, said that there was ample parking for guests and residents, and I just want to get you to reiterate what that parking is, because I thought you said there were twenty units of parking on the property.
Twenty, no, twenty spaces for the ten units. These are two-story, two-bedroom units, and so our parking standard is two spaces for two-bedroom units. And so since each unit is a two-bedroom times ten, that's twenty spaces required, and that's what the applicant is providing.
So it has adequate parking?
Yes, it has adequate parking, correct.
Standard. And it's in an area that's zoned for multifamily use, and there are multiple multifamily units in the area.
Correct.
Yeah, has both a general plan designation and zoning designation that supports the project as proposed.
Yeah.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
What, Tom, or James, what's the density in the R3 zone, the allowable density per acre?
Typically fifteen, fifteen units an acre.
And this is point six-two of an acre, is that what I think I saw?
Correct.
So this is then compliant with the zoning density that's allowed? Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, I went down there today. Before I was on the planning commission, I lived on Ninth Street at the southwest corner of Roding and Ninth, so I lived basically just to the north of this site, across the street. I don't think I committed any crimes while I was there, and I didn't make a whole lot of noise while I was there, which were a couple of the things were raised in the letters and in the comments tonight, so that was a little disturbing to hear that kind of comment made. I do appreciate the comments having to do with the change in the land use. As was said, there's a large-ish apartment complex, two-story, just to the north of this, which takes access from Roding, and there's another one to the east which takes its access off Tenth Street, which is a one-story complex. So it's not like we're really changing the characteristics or the land uses in the neighborhood. The house that's on this property, pretty worn out. So I think reading through the staff report and the general plan goals and policies which are listed in that report, seems to me that this is consistent with what our plans call for in that area, and I haven't heard anything tonight which would cause me to think anything different. So I guess that's all I had to say. I just wanted to clarify what the zone density was and that everybody that lives in a multiple-family complex is not necessarily going to break the law, which I, like I said, I found that a little bit off-putting, but be that as it may, that was said, so pumped.
Thank you, Commissioner Ketchel. Is there anyone else on the commission that has any comments? Are you trying to speak, Mr. Del Nero? Because you're muted. You're still muted. I see you move, your mouth moving, but I hear nothing.
Okay, I think now. You hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Like Bob, I did go to that area today, and I agree everything he had said, and I also seen the multi-units basically all over the place like Tom showed, so I'm just uttering what Bob had said, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Johnson, do you have any comments?
No. Board, I also drove by today, saw the streets, saw the house at the end of its age. Yeah, I concur.
Thank you. All right, I think Mr. Ketchel did a fine job of summarizing what the issue is. I think this is the appropriate use, it complies with the zoning code. Given what's on the property, it will be an improvement. I think we have some communication challenges that occurred that may have started this out on the wrong foot, and I would encourage the applicant and the neighbors to try to resolve that communication so that when the structure is complete, we have some neighborly relationship developed. But in the meantime, I will be supporting this, and at this time, I'll be asking the commission for a motion.
Well, I guess, since I spoke, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I would like to make the determination, the project is exempt from my environmental review pursuant to sequel guidelines, section one-five-three-three-two, which is class thirty-two for infill development projects, and approval of twenty-zero-nine SPA, subject to the findings conditions contained in the attached draft resolution, PC twenty-one zero-three.
Thank you. Let me just make sure, is that correct? Approval of specific plan twenty-zero-nine?
Yeah. That is correct.
The application number, like, isn't it? All right, I have a motion on the floor. I will at this time be looking for a second. I'm sorry, was that you, Mr. Johnson?
It was.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Yes, Commissioner Ketchel.
Hi.
Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Del Nero.
Hi.
And Chair Person Smith.
Hi.
Motion passes four-zero.
Thank you, and thank you to those who called in and expressed your opinions and concerns, and once again, I would encourage you to communicate with one another and try to make this the project that has the potential for being in that neighborhood. Moving on to new business, there are no items, no public meetings, no unfinished business, no matters initiated by the planning commission or staff. We'll move on to reports. Anyone on the commission have any reports? Mr. Ketchel?
No, I don't.
Mr. Del Nero?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
No, ma'am.
I also have nothing to report. Nubia?
Nothing to report tonight, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Tom?
Nothing to report, Chair Person Smith.
All right. I can't believe that, but I appreciate it. With that, I will adjourn the meeting to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, February sixteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.